Good evening and welcome to the Yakima City Council, March 11, 2025. I'll call the meeting order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Burke?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Byers?
Present.
Deceo?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Roy? Councilmember Roy indicated he would be on Zoom.
Yes, he did, okay. All right, second thing on the agenda is executive session.
All right, Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to executive session until 5:30 PM to discuss pending litigation pursuant to RCW 4230-110-1I.
Second.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilmember Burke for the council to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation as allowed by RCW 4230-110-1I until 5:30 PM. The council is expected to take further action following the executive session. I call the regular meeting on March 11 back to order. We'll have a roll call, please.
Burke?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Byers?
Present.
Deceo?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Thank you. We're down to item three on the agenda, which is a council item. A consideration of Yakima's citizens at all versus city of Yakima.
All right, I move that the city appeals Judge Elliot's March 7, 2025 order granting partial summary judgment.
Second.
So we have a motion by, I'm sorry, by Councilmember Burke and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown. May I see the motion, please? That the city appeals Judge Elliot's March 7, 2025 order granting partial summary judgment. We'll take a roll call vote on this, please.
Burke?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Deceo?
No.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
No.
Roy?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, council.
5-2.
I'm sorry, 5-2.
What did you say?
I had my fingers up here and I didn't count the other hand. 5-2, thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment, and this evening we'll allow 15 minutes for public comment. If you're called forward, if you want to make a public comment, first of all, pull out a paper in the back and bring it to the city clerk. You'll have two and a half minutes. When you come to the microphone, please give us your name and the city in which you live. The first is Shelley White.
Hello again. I'm Shelley White. I'm appearing again to you as a private Yakima citizen tonight, not as a member of the planning commission. I hope that you were able to review handouts that I passed out the last time I was here. If not, let me recap the new laws that were not voted on by the people having to do with middle housing. Cities must significantly reduce or eliminate residential areas that are mostly single-family. They must allow four housing units per lot on most or all formerly single-family residential lots, and I've quoted the sections of the law to you in the handout. So the new laws affect current, normal, single-family neighborhoods. Anyone on your block now has the right to add up to three housing units to their parcel following newly revised building codes. New subdivisions also must comply fully. And anyone on, let's see, I'm sorry, get that up where I can see it. Meaning that new subdivisions may be allowed to build as single-family homes, but they can be altered by any resident at any time in the future. And these new units can be one level, or in Yakima, a triplex up to 35 feet high. In Yakima, there are also no occupancy limits on any housing unit. The new laws allow and promote rentals by absentee landlords. And the owner, absent or present, can also sell units as condos after lot line adjustments breaking up the existing lot. Parking is diminished or entirely eliminated, so parking on the street may be the new norm. The new laws allow neighbors no right to stop such development and no legal recourse to fight such development. The only breaks built into the new laws have to do with the community's limit on available land or infrastructure limits like water, sewer, fire, electricity, and hopefully Yakima has some limits. And the legislature has conveniently opted out of the entirety of their new laws by excluding any existing housing development that has current CCNRs or an active homeowners association, including most existing gated communities where they most likely live. And the new laws must be incorporated into Yakima's next comprehensive plan revision, which the council voted to start work on last month. So tonight, I'm handing out the Department of Commerce's draft of the instructions to cities called unit lot subdivisions.
I'm sorry, we'll accept those from you, but the time is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you very much for bringing them. Next is Tony Corsi.
ACLU lawsuit, huh? Oh, did I see that?
Please identify yourself and the city in which you live.
Tony Corsi, where I lay my head, and yes, I have been vetted. On March 4, 2025, I heard a county commissioner say something about a person who is not afraid to put theirself out of a job. So if you decide to do any research, you might be surprised at the fact Alice Stevens married, had two sons, whereas his son passed away I never met. I met her husband and their son Doug, which was my age. Now, listen, please. Her husband passed away, in which left Alice and Doug. And Doug was on a life support system. Meaning it took electricity to keep him alive. I asked my wife to get married. She informed me we could not leave town because there was some people we will have to take care of. She had made a promise to the family that we would take care of them. Naturally, I agreed. Now, you guys look at plans like you're doing now, the research, and you're changing the rules. 1021 North 34th Avenue was her grandmother's. Her grandmother's wish was not the house to be any of the kids, so I bought the house. And the kids know that, and they're my witness to go to the trial that's coming up. So 34th Avenue, I went down to the censors' office and I noticed that her name's still on that. What a joke, huh? Understand this, Steve Hahn did not have 50% of the water right claim, and he called up Pacific Power, but you guys allowed the development to go forward. So instead of cutting off the tail, I went straight for the head. All seven of you, and the seven before you, and the seven before you that. So we know about the Supreme Court, what, making things moot? Yeah, I know my time's up. You're gonna be pleasantly surprised when it all turns around on you.
Mr. Corsi, thank you very much. Mr. Beaters, are there anyone online who'd like to address the council this evening?
No mayor, byers, there is not.
Thank you. That will end public participation for this evening. The next is our study session items, the first of which, 5A is impact fee revenue discussion. And our Director of City Development, Bill Preston, and our Director for Planning, Trevor Martin, are going to present the council.
Good evening, council. Bill Preston, Director of Community Development. So I think it was a month ago, so in February, we brought impact fees before you, and we're tasked with coming back with a little bit more information before we, as staff, move forward on, down this path of whether we want to explore this or not further. So I'm just gonna briefly recap what we went over last time and then give you the new information that I found, and then Trevor can share some of the actual numbers that he was able to round up. So first of all, so what are impact fees? Impact fees are one-time charges assessed by a local government against new development project to help pay for new or expanded public capital facilities that will directly address the increased demand for services created by the development. So that's what, and that comes from the MRSC, which is a great resource for all things, well, government. So, things that they do, so it's for capital facilities only, so it's capital projects, only for improvements reasonably related to the impacts caused by the new development. So that can vary. We do need to use more than one funding source, so impact fees can't pay for everything. Must be included in our comprehensive plan. I shared that with you last time. And then there is a deadline for the use of those funds. So Trevor was able to set up a meeting with our comp plan consultant, and they have had some experience in this, so we met with them and had asked some questions, got some clarifications, and so here's some things that they kind of shared with us about this process. First of all, so we talked about it was fire, parks, transportation, and school were all options. Their suggestion was that the schools not be considered part of this as it's, they kind of, they can do that somewhat themselves if they wanted. So stick with fire, parks, and transportation. They were, we were talking about the RFQ that we'd go out to try and get somebody to do this, and they suggested that it be probably done in two phases. A community, an initial effort, which was a community engagement stakeholder meeting, just to kind of wrap our heads around what developments were happening, how things were being done, and get some more background information there. And then we would prepare that scope and request for qualifications and/or proposal. And that would probably be around the 10 to, actually, now it was up to $10,000 to $15,000 to do that, where I originally, I think I said it was hopefully under 10.
Just for the RFQ?
Just for the RFQ, right, to build that, hold those meetings, and to do some of that. Now, remember, staff doesn't have the expertise to write this thing in the way that I think would be complete enough to get what we're really looking for. That's, this is not something that I have done. So there were some suggestions that came out of it as well, and so this is kind of some things that we could limit as we go forward with the RFQ, if we go forward with it. Probably look at the transportation element first. It's the easiest. I think there's a lot of examples out there for the transportation element. That, that there's an option to do project-specific, i.e. in the, or, or in the comp plan list, or we could do just project list-specific. So it could be something that's, anything on the list would be eligible for those impact fees rather than it has to be project A, B, or C. Because of the size of the city, the geographical size of the city, you know, what are the areas? Or could we do this by districts, or there's some other options to try and how, to determine how those impact fees would be collected and where they may be used throughout the city. Remember that we had mentioned that we need to allow for waivers, reductions, or exemptions that might be eligible or approved. One thing that I didn't realize was we can meter the implementation of this, so maybe we spread it out over two, three, four years and incrementally enact it. And then a reminder, the comp plan still needs to be completed first because that's the, the collection of the list, so to speak, that, that would be eligible for those impact fees to be used on. Couple of notes. So I come before you as the city engineer quite often, and I update the transportation improvement plan or that, that list of projects. Police and fire don't get that option. They don't come before you very often. So just keep that in mind. I'm not, I'm sorry, not police and fire. Fire and parks don't come before you very often for updating their lists. So just keep that in mind. The, whatever the formula is that we use to develop this, it needs to be developed, defensible, right? There needs to be a nexus to the, to the project and, and those impacts. So that formula will be the, kind of the difficult part in how we put together what that fee would be. There was some discussion about, and Trevor may hit on this a little bit later, about, we already have development impacts for our frontage, so right where, on the frontage of a development, our code allows for those improvements to be made. So we would have to consider whether or not those are in lieu of the impact fee or in addition, or the impact fee is in addition to what we already, and Trevor did a little bit of research on that. Finance will have to set up something. We will end up with some new finance codes or some, something to track this, right? So not only as the money comes in, but the projects and/or the locations, and so that administrative effort is going to need to be put in place, which it's not right now. Because we're waiting on the comp plan, which won't be done until 2026, June of 2026, we probably wouldn't see any revenue from anything like this until at least 2027. And then finally, I did ask about the, the price or something like this, and it's, you know, it's in the 75 to 100K to do the whole study once, you know, after we did the RFP. So that's what I kind of dug up.
Is, is this something like, that Mike Bailey has experience in at all?
I think so. Did he, he talk to you?
Briefly, yeah.
He did, he also reiterated the complexity of this and how figuring out, like if you want to do a fire station, making sure that you have true impacts. People who have true impacts in the area are, their funding is going toward that project. And I, I am sure he's had experience doing it. I just don't have his remarks tonight for this discussion. We could ask him at the next meeting.
Oh, I might have a few more details on, on a little bit. I didn't talk to him about that, but a little bit of the complexity to the, to the overall costs and now, like putting together the cost analysis for the actual impact fee. Every, every city does it a little bit differently, and some of the, so I reached out to a handful of cities, and they, they sent me some reports back, and I'll, sorry, I'll just jump into this really quickly and hopefully help answer some of the questions you have. Reached out to a handful of cities throughout Washington, Richland, Ellensburg, Vancouver, Olympia, Everett, cities that were kind of around our same size, some cities on,
That's a lot of cities, not some cities.
Yeah, and some cities on this side of the state, some cities on the other side of the state, just to kind of figure out what was going on with all of this, to be kind of well-rounded. And what I found out was, was that, again, this is heavily, heavily tailored towards cities and with the types of development they are seeing. They have these equations, but they, they're tied back to traffic generation. They're tied back to the square footage of housing, housing trends, unit development, all these little things that go into this, what, what makes up the equation, and then how they use that equation, then come, to come up to, with an evaluation that we then ask for as an impact fee. What I've kind of found here is that, and I'll just read you some of the numbers that they gave to me. Most, most of the cities that I talked to, they implement impact fees for parks and traffic. Fire was here or there, and then I had one that, two that implemented, or three that implemented. So schools was kind of there a little bit. But the average, if you're looking at a single-family residence, I mean, again, it ranges from about $4,000 a unit to $8,000 a unit, kind of depending on the city, the area. Some cities are divided into districts, some cities are, have a flat rate. Some cities have a handful of things that are going on, and there's a separate valuation, again, for the parks, for the, for the traffic, so on and so forth.
Impact development.
What's that?
Like, impact fees for like new development.
Yeah, yes, yeah. So most, most of the cities that I looked at, they collected on housing development. That was, that was across the board. And then some of them collected on commercial development. Not all of them collect on commercial development. So it's, it's kind of a hit and miss. Most of what I saw, as Bill mentioned earlier, is we do have requirements for frontage improvements that are part of this, curb better sidewalk, maybe some street widenings, that sort of thing. So most of this, the impact fees were in addition. So it would be the frontage improvements plus the impact fees. Now, that being said, again, as Burke talked about, there are ways to kind of, there are equations to come with, to come up with to kind of offset that a little bit. And to throw another wrench in this as well, is that impact fees, there's two bills that are in front of our legislature right now that are addressing impact fees. One of them has to do with the timing and the waivers that was just mentioned, and then another one has to do with a different sort of tax and lieu sort of situation. So I checked yesterday, both of them are still, I think, I don't, I don't know where they're at. They're not, they're, they've not made it very far. Yeah, yeah, they're somewhere in that realm. So they could shake out, they might not shake out, so that might add another layer of complication onto this, or something we'd have to figure out in the meantime. Let's see, are there any, I can, again, I have some totals of what cities have collected too, so if you're interested in that. So last year, I went off 2024. Everett was about 5 million. Olympia was 1.7, Richland was 3.5, Ellensburg was 385,000, Vancouver was 12 million. So it kind of varies.
Vancouver was 12 million?
So it kind of, it kind of varies, and again, coming, yeah, good for them, good for them, yeah. Yeah, Vancouver, Washington. So it kind of just varies in how they put all the information together. Again, it's not, each city is just a little bit different, so.
You said Richland did too?
Yeah, Richland was at 3.5 for 2024. And they're at, they're at 60, they're almost at 64,000 right now, but they're part of the tri-state cities, so.
So I had, I had asked a question regarding whether or not they ever had to give any money back. You know, they ran out of time, and Burke was not familiar with any situation where they had to do that. So it does seem like they're able to spend the money. I wasn't able to find really anything on which projects the money went to, but I have to assume that they were doing various transportation, or various projects with it. So that's kind of the, the short version of what we found. So again, like I,
One question on it.
Yeah, okay.
On, let's say, new housing for us, did you guys run any numbers if we went off of something? Like, to compare?
So we, I did, I had, I did,
You know it's super complex.
Yeah. I ran,
Hypothetically.
I ran Union Gap's model, and Union Gap has a flat rate model, which, again, I don't know if it would necessarily work for us, but I did run their numbers, and I think if we use their, we would have collected somewhere around 1.5 million.
1.5.
Yeah, in impact fees.
What about commercial?
Um, I did not run commercial, no.
So just as a quick reminder, I left you last, last month with a request for some guidance on our side, right? This is not something that we have in our budget for the RFQ, nor is it something that we have in our budget for the actual study itself, nor can we fund this out of our current comp plan grant that we got. So if we decide to move, we, council decides to instruct us to move forward, I would need, or I would go to the, to Mike, Finance Director, and say, "Help."
Are there other kinds?
I need to say, "Good luck."
Yeah, right, right, and he might say, "Good luck," yes.
Are there other kinds of grants that you can look at, other than?
For this type of work right now, and this, no, not at this point in time. There were some planning grants at the federal level, probably about, yeah, five months ago, but this, yeah.
Well, that's the piece I was hearing, is that to implement it is going to take an investment on the part of the city. We can make a decision or not, but just from my thinking, looking at our budgetary constraints right now, and even the amount of time we have to get into the comp plan to do a study on RFQ and then do a study on the, the process itself, and then implement that is one cost.
itself, and then implement that is one cost. The un, the unspoken cost is the cost of staff time, or extra staff needed to carry this out. So that's my concern right now. I, I think that impact fees can be very helpful. I actually think I was the first one that brought this up last year when we talked about it. But just our situation right now, wisdom would dictate to me personally that it's not the time to make that investment. I think we could do that, look at that in the future.
When we can afford it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I just, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if it's even worth it.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, 1.5 million is worth on our budget when we're trying to close 9 million. But we don't have, you know, pennies lying around to give you, Bill, so.
Yeah. And 1.5 million, we wouldn't even get until '27.
Right.
Yeah.
Or '28, or somewhere around there, right, so.
Well, the money's basically earmarked when it comes anyway. It's not really practical to count that as part of our operating budget.
Right. I mean, so from the, I, I will speak from the transportation side. Obviously, it helps to go towards match dollars, right? I could, I can definitely leverage that. And so it's helpful, it's helpful in that sense. And then if it was like at the project list, the way we're gonna distribute it, then I have other options that are, anything on that list is available, as opposed to a single project. So I think, can I spend it? Yeah. I can do that.
There's also a small portion that can be used for, I guess I'm gonna have to put this out here, there, there's a small portion that can also be used to, for admin fees as well as part of this, as an overall thing. So like, City of Olympia collected $25,000 for traffic admin, administration, when they were collecting their impact fees, so.
Well, the other aspect is honestly, looking at Yakima, we are, we are somewhat blocked in terms of expansion for housing. You know, we, we're looking at a lot of infill space. When I was in the planning commission, we were talking about infill, because we didn't have a whole lot of vacant land, and a lot of that is being built on already now. So is it practical to invest that kind of money in impact fees for residential? And we, we may be very limited in the future in terms of how much residential development we can do.
We can do commercial, right?
Do commercial, so...
And I don't see a lot of commercials.
Well, the Nob Hill development...
And, ye, yes.
That I, I have heard that would have generated around $5 million in impact fees. Just Nob Hill, Red Robin.
And they were really surprised they didn't have to pay it.
Yeah.
Exactly. Because we're handing away free, free labor.
There's, there's that, and then there's also, so another, other cities will also use like a traffic, additional traffic generation model. So if you're moving to a use that generates additional trips, then that can also trigger impact fees as well.
Did you ask the City of Union Gap by chance, like, how they went through this process?
I did not, no, but I can.
I would just ask. I mean, I, I, I'm just trying to think of, like, if they went through this complexity of a process, or if they had shortcuts that they figured out.
It, it helps when you have 6,000 houses instead of, you know, 40,000.
Yeah, I get that.
Everything's a...
Well, it seems that the, the city, if they were going to do this for significant income, would have implemented this, you know, 15 years ago, or 10 years ago. Would have been very helpful at that point. I'm not saying it wouldn't be helpful now. I'm just thinking to make the investment right now, considering our vegetarian strain wouldn't be the, I don't think would be the wisest thing to do. Can the comprehensive plan be amended at a later date? It can be. So we could look at doing this in the future if we thought it was gonna be fruitful or productive, rather than doing it right now.
Yep.
Okay.
When would that be?
So the comp plan, I bring it to you usually every February, or Planning Division brings it to you every, the end of, every January, and then the last day is April 30th, the last working business day in April to, to amend the comp plan.
So we would have a chance, then?
So we're going through the periodic update right now, so we would, yeah, after this update, then we would amend the comp plan to accommodate this. Yeah, they, Burke mentioned that it's very hard to kind of start with nothing and then work it into a periodic update. It's very difficult to do that, so they would want to finish the periodic update before working it in.
Okay.
Is it hard once the, I mean, you're going through the, that's the, the, the plan that's gonna be done next year?
Yeah.
So...
It would probably be a lot easier at that point in time, because they would have current housing numbers and all that, all the data available for new streets built, and all this other stuff, population projections, so, yeah.
Yep, great.
Any other questions or comments by council?
Yeah, it's Councilman Roy.
Go ahead, please.
I, I see it, and I, it's something that I think we really need to look up for the future, especially if that, the old lumber mill gets developed. I mean, that's gonna be a, that's gonna be, when, if that ever happens, that impact fees, something in place when that ever happens would be really good for the city.
Yep.
When that happens. Right, particularly if we're looking at commercial development, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilman, for chirping in. I forgot to...
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
I would like to see the mill site developed, but at this point, it doesn't seem that there's any economic incentive for the owners to do anything with the property. And, you know, if, if we do anything with that mill site, I, it should have some parks and some other amenities for the city included in it, because it's such a large parcel. But we'd have to, it's probably better to just deal with that as it moves along.
Do you need anything from us, Bill?
Uh, what I think I heard was push/pause. And, and that's fine, then I don't need anything. That, that works for me.
Is that consensus of the council right now, or does someone want to make a motion?
Do we need to make a motion?
No, only if we wanted to move forward.
I move that we table the idea of these fees to a later date.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Glenn, and a second by Councilman Dicio, to table this to a later date. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation this evening.
I don't think we needed to, but...
I don't think so either. It's okay, we'll do it. Next is item 5B, which is a resolution amending the proclamation policy. Our attorney, Sarah Watkins, is gonna present to council.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. In front of you are proposed changes to the proclamation policy that are based on the discussion that we had at the last council meeting. Quick recap is the procedure, if approved, would change it to proclamations being proposed only by members of the city council by motion. If that motion passed, then the city staff would ensure that the language meets the requirements and guidelines, and then it would be put back on the council agenda for final approval. So some changes were made to the guidelines to be consistent with that, so that entities and organizations weren't involved in the process directly anymore. And I did add a section that stated that city staff could consult with outside entities on language. We may not be the expert in the correct language to use in proclamations, so if the city manager finds it appropriate to consult with an outside agency about a specific, the specific language, and an already approved by the council to come forward to it, proclamation, then that could be an option if the city manager chose to do so. So if you have any questions, I can answer them.
I have a question. I just, could you walk through, like, like, let's say I'm a person who wants a proclamation. Walk me through that. Who do I call? Who do I talk to?
Well, if you're a person who wants a proclamation, you are going to need to contact a city council member. It can be in your district, outside your district, doesn't matter. The council member would then look at it. If the council member wished to bring it in front of the council, they would make a motion at a council meeting to put on a specific dated agenda, a proclamation regarding something, and that would then go to a vote if it were approved. The proclamation would come to staff, the city manager's office, for drafting, to make sure it followed the guidelines, and then we'll put it back on the council agenda for the day that the council dictated, and at that point, the council would move and second to approve it. And then as part of that motion, the council could say specifically whether you wanted to read it, or whether you didn't want to read it. So all the decisions are up to you. It basically just flips the first two pieces that we have now, so that instead of them coming directly from people and entities to the city manager's office, they need to go through a city council member first.
Okay. Any other questions by council?
No.
No?
All right.
I move to adopt the resolution.
A second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Berg to adopt the, the resolution, and a second by Deputy Mayor Brown. We'll need a roll call vote, please. And who would you read it?
This is a resolution amending the City of Yakima proclamation issuance policy. Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Dicio?
No.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
No.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5 to 2. I count my finger count right this time. Thank you. Thank you, council. So a resolution is adopted. That brings us to adjournment.
All right. Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn to the next council regular meeting on March 18th at 5:30 PM here in the City Hall, council chambers.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, and a second by Councilman Dicio, to adjourn to our next regular city council meeting on March 18th, 2:00 AM, 5:30 PM here at City Hall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
If you're opposed, you can say.